We'll now call to order the May 8th City Council meeting. And we're gonna start with invocation with the Reverend Dr. George Anderson. Then we'll have the pledge to the flag and then roll call.
Let us pray. Can we stand? Gracious God, we acknowledge your presence in the place. And so, God, we pray for our council. We pray for all that are gathered. We pray for your direction, your guidance, and your wisdom. In every discussion, in every deliberation, in every decision, we thank you in advance, God, what you're already gonna do in this place. God, let everything be done decently and in order. If we ask it in Jesus's name, let us all say, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, present. Green.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Deputy Mayor West.
Present. Okay. We just wanna remind everyone that we have floor rules. And we're asking everyone to please abide by the floor rules. We're gonna be courteous and respectful and listen to each other. We have the directors along the wall there who are here and can answer your questions after the meeting. We have our Chief of Staff, Leonard Leitner, who is also here in a supportive role in terms of answering questions and what have you. I'd like to know if anyone has any comments on the agenda items only. And then I'd like to remind, where's the sign up sheet? Is there a sign up sheet?
It's at the podium.
If you would like to comment or ask a question at the podium, we have a sign up sheet, so you can go to the podium and sign up. Can we get an approval for the minutes of the previous meeting, April 10th, 2024, and April 24th?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna save the communications for the next portion of our meeting. We have here with us, and we'd like to invite to the podium, Dr. Marilyn V. Harwith. And she has some vital information about Chester community asthma prevention. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Slides. Great, okay. I'm Dr. Marilyn Harwith. I'm the Deputy Director of the Philadelphia Regional Center for Children's Environmental Health. That is a center that was established a couple of years ago. It's funded by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, part of NIH, to really take care of children, do research to improve children's environmental health. But in addition to doing research, we do programs. We do programs to actually help children in our region. And when I say region, I mean beyond Philadelphia, beyond Chester, in really the, I would say, better part of Pennsylvania, sort of, maybe better was the portrait, the eastern part of Pennsylvania. Probably half of Pennsylvania is where our range is right now. We are part of, again, a set of six of these centers across the country. Next slide. And we focus on a number of issues that are important for children's environmental health: lead, asthma, endocrine-disrupting chemicals, climate change. But today, I'm here to talk about our Community Asthma Prevention Program. Next slide. The Community Asthma Prevention Program was started in Philadelphia a number of years ago by Dr. Tyra Bryan Stevens and has shown great success to improve the asthma experience by children. So, children that already have asthma and have asthma in a very severe state, this program, which is designed to bring in community health workers into the home to help families negotiate problems around medications, around triggers in the home, around all the other places that children find themselves that can be improved potentially, maybe daycare, maybe schools. And so, what we've done so far is we've set up this program in Chester, similar to the way it was run in Philadelphia. And so far, in the first, in the second year, first year was set up, second year, we've done, 58 families have participated. And in the third year so far, we've had about 18 families. Our goal is to do at least 50 families each year. When Keystone Health Plan heard that we were doing this program in Chester, they actually funded a second community health worker. So we have two people working on this program right now. We've done so many engagement presentations to let everyone know about this, in, you know, trying to engage as many partners as possible throughout Chester. Next slide. And these are just some of our partners. We started out with the Foundation for Delaware County, the Chester Environmental Partnership, the Health Department, of course, Rosetta Carter has been key in our implementation, and so many of these other groups, medical providers. Next slide. And what it actually entails is a series of educational programs, about four, and medication review. There is an environmental assessment of a child's bedroom that is ongoing, and supplies that are given to each family to help them reduce these asthma triggers. There is repeated education and inspection throughout the process. Next slide. And so, the visits, these are the visits. They go up until 12 months. And they, I won't read this whole slide to you, but it involves various topics of education and various environmental mitigations that are really repetitive in a sense, that we make sure that there is understanding, good uptake, and that there aren't any barriers to actually participating for families. Next slide. And I wanna talk a little bit about an adjunct to this program. Our center also funds pilot projects. And so, we funded the Chester Environmental Partnership for $50,000 to use a program that they already had in place, the Tabitha Corps, which is a group of young people that are trained in a whole variety of activities. And what they did is they cleaned up 12 neighborhood lots. These lots were started, were obviously ones that were loaded with trash, but we started with a list that was done first by Make Chester Beautiful from 2016, and then expanded upon that. And then we looked at those lots immediately afterward, obviously they were very clean. We looked at them at three months and six months to see, did they stay not dumped upon? And I'll show you data about that in just a second. And then we surveyed the families that were in our CAP program to see what they thought of these kinds of activities. Next slide. At each of those points, beginning before and after cleanup, at three months and six months, each of those lots was evaluated by two evaluators. And they were graded on a scale of one to four, one being looks pretty good, very little trash, and one, four being really loaded with dumping trash. Next slide. And what we found is, in the orange or peach-colored lines, what we found was that even though these lots were initially completely cleaned up, by three months and, I'm sorry, one month and six months, a lot of the dumping had recurred. And so, I bring this to your attention because enforcement is obviously an important part of keeping Chester beautiful, keeping it from not having dumping. I don't know if I made it clear earlier, I meant to say that the reason we care about dumping is, when we have these lots that have all this debris on them, and in people's yards with extra things, rodents and pests live in that kind of environment. And so, by removing it, we can remove rodents and pests, which are key triggers for asthma in Chester. And so, that's why we feel it's so important and would ask you to help us. Next slide. These are the list of sites that had recurrence of dumping. So you have this PowerPoint, you have these addresses, and I would ask you to think about, I don't know, maybe surveillance of these lots, maybe added cleanup efforts on an ongoing basis, but I leave that to you. We just, we collected the information, and I just wanna urge you and tell you that it's important. We will continue with our Community Asthma Prevention Program for the duration of the five-year grant, and we hope to continue to enroll more and more families and make a transformational difference in Chester, and hope to actually have this program be continued beyond our five-year grant. We're working on ways to figure out how to fund that. Be happy to take any questions.
Sure, I have a couple. What other methods are used to encourage community involvement? Because the numbers are saying, in the first, the second year was 52, and then the third year is 18. What other methods are being used to encourage community members to participate? Because that seems kinda low to me.
Yeah. Well, you know, we get extremely comprehensive lists of people with asthma from the health plans that really represent everyone in Chester. And we contact every single person on those lists. So, of course, we'd be more than happy to take, you know, people to self-refer. And in fact, we have these flyers that are around, and if, I'll leave them here, if you have any ways to get them, but they've been given out in many, many venues and to many organizations throughout Chester electronically and in person, in paper. And we'd be happy to receive individual referrals, but we, you know, not everyone, in fact, we have quite a few people who don't choose to engage with the program. We call them first, and then we email them, and we text them. And so, only after there've been multiple attempts to reach out to people in different ways, because we know people, you know, some people that never look at their emails, some people are sure that every phone call they get that they don't know is from a bill collector, and so they don't look at that, and we know all of that. So we text them with the actual information, saying who we are and that we would very much like to talk with them about enrolling their child. But if you have other suggestions for how we can do it, we'd be more than happy to do those.
Well, I do see you out in the community at different events, and those events are very beneficial to our community members. But why do you think the numbers are so low? I mean, you're saying that you text them and you call them, but what if that is a non-working number for that individual if it's changed? Do you have procedures like a door knocking to go out and make them aware of the opportunities that are available?
Yeah, we haven't, we have not employed that yet. We believe that the medical provider for the child usually does have their correct contact information because they need it. And so, what we'll do is, if the number is wrong, is we go back to the healthcare provider, tell them the information was wrong, and so the next time the child comes in, they update that information. And we continually get re-updated lists, so we can always go back. And we do go back to those families when we find the new information.
Well, thank you so much for answering my questions.
Sure.
Dr. Harwith, would you also just speak a little bit about the asthma cleanups that are sponsored by the Chester Environmental Partnership and your organization?
Sure. Just to give you more of detail about that, they involved actually bringing dumpsters to the community. And the dump, it was announced to a particular neighborhood, you know, sort of a certain area around where the dumpster and the cleanup site was going to be located. The community then had the opportunity to have themselves bring their own junk out there. So if they wanted to clean out their house, or their basement, or anything in their yard, they could put it in there. And in fact, the Tabitha Corps was available to help them. So all they needed to do was let us know that they had a need, and that this group of young people would help them do it. And people were thrilled. The dumpsters were always absolutely full. In fact, sometimes they were overflowing, and so, you know, it, I think, removed a lot of junk from the community, and that was good. And it also made it easy for people to get rid of their own junk. Because, I don't know about you, but sometimes it's hard for me to keep track of, like, what day do I have to bring it where, and do I have transportation and all that? It was, you know, easy for them. It was right in their community.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Dr. Harwith, you know, I appreciate your work.
Sure. Can I just leave these with you in case anyone would like to have them?
I've known you for a retain-
I have a question. Please, I came in late, so I excuse you, it was already been asked and answered. But how much does the impact of COVID have to do with what you're experiencing with the asthma? Because I'm adult, I can speak for myself. I feel confused with the COVID as far as I understand congestion, but I feel annoyed in the afternoon, in the evening. I have never been like that. And this has all been since then. I, you know, I've noticed some differences in the quality of air before COVID, but I'm just wondering what studies have been done, setting in to sort of hook this together or try not to.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's so much we need to know yet about the long-term effects of having COVID. And all of those studies are really ongoing. I don't think that we can, right now, say that there are very many long-term effects that are different than a lot of the other viruses. The difference is that millions more people had this particular virus, and so we are seeing some of the consequences after the virus that we may not have seen before. As far as the worsening, sort of, allergy symptoms that you might be experiencing, I would point out that that may have more to do with climate change and the fact that we have a lot more rain and a lot more growth and pollen in the air. We've had many more pollen, high pollen days in the last couple of years than we have previously. And I think many people that had allergies previously are experiencing them in a worse way, and there are many more people who are also developing new allergies, and I think that that may be playing a bigger role.
So you're anxious to gather information?
Yes, I think the studies are still ongoing, and I think they, you know, they're looking at all different outcomes. And so, the information will be coming out, you know, at all different times. Now, if you just sort of watch the news, I'm guessing some key findings will be coming out over time.
Thank you for your questions, and thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. There is no old business, and there are no ordinances to be voted on today. So, Madam Clerk, will you move forward with the resolutions?
Can everybody hear me okay, or should I remove my mask?
We can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Resolution, whereas the City of Chester has determined that acquiring certain real estate located at West Second Street, known as Route 291, and Lloyd Street, Chester, PA, 19013, with a tax ID number 49-07-00041-02, glasses are fogging, known as the property, is in the best interest of the health and welfare of the City of Chester. And whereas Chester First Partnership has agreed to convey the property to the City of Chester in the amount of $1,375,000. And whereas pursuant to 11 P.A.C.S.A. Section 12402.1 states, Chester City Council in exercising its discretion to make decisions that further the public interest under terms it deems most beneficial to the city, council may, subject to any restrictions, limitations, or exceptions stated in this chapter, purchase, hold, use, and manage real and personal property. And whereas in agreement for this sale, a commercial real estate has been prepared by the party's respective representatives and reviewed by their respective legal counsel, a copy of which is attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the purchase of West Second, which is known as Route 291, and Lloyd Street, tax ID number 49-07-00041-02, any amount of $1,375,000 from the Chester First Partnership in as is condition. Further, that it does authorize the proper city officials to take all the necessary steps to effectuate and complete the purchase of the above-mentioned property.
So moved.
Second.
Any question?
I do have a question. I just wanna make sure, Solicitor, that you did get a chance to review these documents in its entirety, and that legal, did their due diligence?
I have reviewed the agreement of sale, and it's proper, and the city is protected. It's fine to proceed.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas pursuant to 65 P.S. Sections 66.1 through 66.9, commonly known as the Right to Know Law, the City of Chester is required to designate an official or an employee as the Open Record Officer. And whereas, due to the reorganization of job duties, it has been determined the City of Chester needs to appoint a new Open Records Officer. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Joan Neal as the Open Records Officer for the City of Chester effective May 1st, 2024. Further, it does authorize the proper city official to register the change with the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records. Even further, said official is authorized to take the necessary steps to meet the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records posting requirements under Section 504B.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official take the necessary steps for an independent due diligence review of the City of Chester's health and benefits programs and risk transfer program in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Further, that it does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into the Statement of Work for Health and Benefits Brokerage Services with Master Services Agreement and the Statement of Work for Risk Consulting Services with Willis of New Jersey Incorporated for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Council of the City of Chester has approved the purchase of 106 through 130 East Sixth Street, Chester, PA, 19013, from the Chester Upland School District in the amount of $508,782.14, which represents the complete forgiveness of all accounts receivable claimed for crossing guard services through December 31st, 2020. And whereas, the Council of the City of Chester wishes to return 106 through 130, excuse me, East Sixth Street to productive use as part of the redevelopment of the Central Business District. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that following settlement with the Chester Upland School District and delivery of the deed, it does hereby authorize the transfer of 106 through 130 East Sixth Street to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester for redevelopment purposes. Further, that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to execute all documents necessary to effectuate this transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby award the contract for the street light maintenance and repair for the City of Chester for which bids were received on January 12th, 2024B, and it is hereby awarded a 24-month agreement to Lenni Electric Corporation, 1020 Andrew Drive, West Chester, PA, 19380, at the low bid price of $12,000 for the base bid, and an additional $2,400 for the emergency service base bid, for a total award amount of $14,400, which does not include additional costs for services beyond street light maintenance and repair. Further, that all other bids for the above be, and they are hereby rejected, all certified checks and/or bid bonds accompanying said bids shall be returned to the unsuccessful bidders. Further, that the Solicitor's Office shall prepare a contract, and a successful bidder shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the contract in accordance with the specifications and to the satisfaction of City Council.
So moved.
I have a question first. You said $24,000 or $2,400?
I said $2,400. So $2,400 is-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
That's because I didn't leave the number.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that Resolution 20-2024, which was passed by Chester City Council on March 13th, 2024, is amended to read as follows: that it does hereby accept the following IT hardware and software quotes. Number one, Dell Marketing LP for $399,928.40, whereby $177,548.73 will be paid through the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA Projects 12, 13, and 14, with the remaining $222,379.67 to be paid from general funds. Number two, Tech Guys Incorporated quotes totaling $846,951.27 will be paid through the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA Project 15. Further, the city has complied with all Keystone purchasing network and/or national cooperative purchasing alliance bidding requirements. Further, the city contract with these vendors for this equipment are contingent upon final review and approval of the city's solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Just for clarity, Chief, with the remaining $222,000, can you explain why that's being paid out of the general fund?
Because it was budgeted in the general fund, so what we did was expended the ARPA funds that were allocated for that, and now we're just going into the general fund. That money was actually already approved in the budget, so we're just using ARPA, and then now we're going into the general fund.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does authorize the proper city official to prepare specifications for the advertisements of bids for the following: number one, management services for the operation of Memorial Park Swimming Pool; and number two, summer food program 2024. Further, that it does authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned bids.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to prepare the advertisement of the notice of accepting applications for the 2024 Summer Food Service Program positions for the City of Chester. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk and other city official to advertise said notice in the Help Wanted section of the Delaware County Daily Times, and to post said notice on the City of Chester website.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor West?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, um, there are, there are no bills for introduction, but I would like to mention, I forgot to mention, that our mayor is in Harrisburg meeting with the Lieutenant Governor. So I'm sure he's there looking out for the good old City of Chester and seeing, you know, what he can do in terms of bringing in additional revenues and, you know, whatever is going to be for the betterment of Chester. So I'd just like to mention that. And then I want to interject one more thing. Uh, we have Mrs. Maray Walker Smith here today with her students from Devon Prep. And these are young men that I've known to be working in the community, doing some great things. And I'd like to invite Mrs. Walker Smith up to the podium just to give us a couple, you know, just take a couple minutes to tell us about your students and what they've been doing here in Chester.
Good morning, everyone.
You can come to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor West and council members. Um, I'm sitting here recognizing Fred Green, who was a junior council member when we were here. And so it's just great to see your trajectory in life and
Thank you.
Councilman Davis and Councilwoman Gibson. Um, so, you know, congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to defer my time to my students here at Devon Prep. Uh, so I am still very much involved in, in Chester. I'm just behind the scenes. Um, but I am working on lots of different projects and stuff that are really making a difference uh, in the community. And one of these projects was the Entrepreneur Innovation Center. And so I'm going to ask my students who helped to, um, design this Entrepreneur Innovation Center um, with me over the last year. And, and so the goal of it really is that, of course, there's a digital divide in minority communities. Um, and it is really a challenge because without, um, access to technology and entrepreneurship and all of the other, um, skill sets, um, you know, minorities are not able to, um, access high-paying jobs and even remote positions, which is where a lot of these, um, positions are going today. So the purpose of this was really to provide that level of, uh, exposure, um, for our residents by offering, um, trainings and certifications. And we just finished up our social media, um, certification, uh, course. And, um, so I'm, I'm happy that, um, uh, City Controller Joy Taylor actually, um, completed that and is certified in social media marketing. Uh, so, you know, please, you know, reach out. And this is a partnership. Um, the Chester Entrepreneur Innovation Center is owned and operated by the Chester Housing Authority. Um, and so, um, you know, I wanted to just give them kudos for, you know, um, being innovative and, um, expanding these opportunities beyond just the residents in, in Chester Housing Authority's properties and opening up to the community. That course was free, um, and it was eighteen people participated and other individuals are, um, you know, also earning their certifications. So I'm going to defer my time to, um, my students that would like to share their experiences as well.
Um, Matt, you will not have, how many students are coming?
My name's Chase Ken. Um, I kind of hopped in on the project a few months after it started. Um, me and Ms. Walker Smith got super close last school year. Um, and a few of my friends had started on the project already, and me and Mark kind of joined in and, uh, partially took over. So the room that I was responsible for on the premises was the podcast room. Um, as you see, like in modern day society, all over social media, celebrities, old athletes are moving, uh, to podcasts, trying to market themselves, uh, kind of a second job for people, but it's also becoming a super profitable business. So I thought being able to have, uh, access to good podcast equipment with, uh, the grant that we received, um, would be a great stepping stone and a career path, maybe even a side hustle for some people in the City of Chester. So, um, yeah, working alongside Mark and some of my other friends and especially Ms. Walker Smith, that's just one of the many things that we've done. Featured on Six ABC, featured on Dalco Times. Um, it's been a lot of fun watching our class sizes grow, um, as all the, as the enjoyment of the people inside of the classes. So, yeah, it's been a great experience for me as well as my classmates and Ms. Walker Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Mark. I'm one of the students here at Devon Prep. Uh, we're all privileged, happy to be here today. Um, so yes, I was working, uh, with Chase, Mrs. Walker Smith, all of them, more in the multipurpose room. So just a little bit about that. Our goal is to provide access to technology and education, um, for all of these students to be able to pursue whatever entrepreneurial endeavor they'd like. Um, and our goal sort of is to support them in those early stages. So building skills like, uh, social media marketing through classes, financial literacy in our finance lab, um, communication skills in the podcast room Chase mentioned earlier. These have all just sort of been pivotal so far, uh, in, in our journey. And we're hoping to just inspire these, uh, young people, but really anybody who's interested, uh, just to sort of look to solve problems, hopefully locally, uh, through entrepreneurship and sort of build that passion for learning. Um, so it's been a pleasure. Thank you for all having us here, and we're happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out this morning. Uh, I did want the Chester community to know about former Councilwoman Maray Walker Smith and how she gives back. She has never left us. She's moved away and pursued some other things educationally, um, on, in terms of entrepreneurship and what have you, but she brings it back here to Chester. And the entrepreneurship, um, um, center is located in the Booker T. Washington Community Center in the, is it the five hundred block of Central Avenue? Yes. So, and it's open to our children here in Chester. And these young men have a wealth of experience that they want to share with our students here so that they can be pre, be prepared. It's about being prepared when they go out to college and into the working world. Our kids have to be prepared. So thank you, gentlemen, for sharing your expertise with us.
Thank you. And I just have a question. Uh, if students or anyone, Chester residents wanted to get involved and wanted to be a part, uh, do they just go to the center or is there a contact phone number or a website?
Yeah, so if you go onto the Chester Housing Authority's, um, website, then you can access the, the website.
So you guys know any students. They, as we all know, technology is really taking over. And so this is what our kids really, uh, need to get into because that's where the big bucks will be and that's where a lot of jobs will be through technology. And so this is a great program. So I encourage some young people and some Chester residents to visit the Chester Housing Authority website and join that program. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to mention that resolutions for introduction can be voted on or referred to the various committees. Uh, the clerks read the resolution. Comments are taken from the administration, the Diaz, and the public before a referral is made to a council committee where more detailed discussion will take place. I just wanted to give you a reference as to how committees work because now, uh, what we're doing, council members are either participants or a chair, a chair of a particular committee. And, um, um, reports now, is this something, should I read this or do you want to report on your own?
The chair will.
Okay. So the Chair, Chair, Chairman Davis is over the Budget and Finance Committee.
So, good morning, everyone. Um, the committee met on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four at one P.M. to go over the proposed fee schedule ordinance. Um, we did table that conversation to meet, uh, the twentieth of May so that every department got an opportunity to thoroughly look over, um, all of their fees for their specific department, and we could come together collectively to discuss all the fees. Um, so we wanted to give everybody ample amount of time to go over their specific fees to, uh, get everything all, out on the table and get it, um, very clear and concise on why we're charging, what we're charging in the City of Chester and how we're going about doing it. So the Budget and Finance Committee will meet again, um, this month, May the twentieth, at one P.M. And hopefully, um, with the hopes of finalizing the fee ordinance schedule to actually get some, uh, clarity on why we're paying and charging the different fees, um, throughout the City of Chester.
Chairperson Gibson, Councilwoman Gibson, she's over Community and Economic Development Committee.
Uh, the committee has not met since the last, uh, council meeting, and as of right now, there are no, uh, future, uh, meetings scheduled. However, there will be, uh, meeting on today to discuss some things with, uh, LNI, uh, with Judy and Lamont.
Human Resources Administration and Appointments Committee, uh, the Chair is, um, Mayor Roots. And, uh, the committee is scheduled to meet on May twentieth at twelve P.M. in the council chambers to review board appointment applications. Chairman Green, um, Parks and Recreation Committee?
Yes, the committee has not met since the last council meeting, and there's currently no meeting scheduled at this time.
Chairman Roots, Mayor Roots is over Public, the Public Safety Committee. And the committee is scheduled to meet May twentieth at eleven A.M. in the council chambers for the Police and Fire Commissioners to request repealing certain ordinances. Public Works Committee, I'm the Chair. And the committee met on April twenty-second, uh, at twelve P.M. in council chambers. Um, there are no future meetings scheduled at this time because I, um, the department that, um, Public Works Department, they're still reviewing fee schedules as well as certain ordinances that we may need to look at, either to repeal or to enhance upon. So we'll, we'll give that another week or two, and then we'll come back. We'll, we'll set up a meeting and, um, have a report for the public. Uh, Chairman Roots, um, is on the Rules Chambers Intergovernmental Relations and Strategy Committee. The committee has not met since the last council meeting. There are no future meetings scheduled at this time. Um, Controller Taylor, um, is it my understanding there's no Controller's report? We had a very detailed report last time, I believe, and there's no Chief of Staff report. Am I correct? Mr. Leitner, is there something you'd like to say?
Yeah, I, I do. I just want to give a, a short review. Um, sorry, we didn't put it on here, but I'm going to bring this up here. So as you all know, I just want to give you a heads up that we did, you, you did approve the, uh, parking contract. I just want to give you and the public an update of what's happening with the parking. Um, the parking contract has been approved. Uh, we will be posting this on the website, uh, after this meeting. But this gives you just a breakdown and a timeline of what's going on with the implementation of the parking. Uh, parking will be starting off, uh, right now, we have them, the actual parking manager reviewing the, the map. They're looking at the signs, the current parking meters that are in place. Uh, we are ordering the bags to put over the parking heads. Uh, they're ordering signs right now to put the signs up to start, uh, parking enforcement. Um, many of these things will take place over the next couple of months. The plan is to roll out live parking enforcement again on July first. But just wanted to give you a heads up, we're going to start promoting and sending out information about parking. Uh, again, like I said, this timeline will be placed on the website as well, so you can see what's happening and what's going on, what's in progress, what's pending. And there will also be a strict landing page for parking. So there's questions and answers on there as where, pardon me, as well as the map of what's going to be enforced at the beginning. Uh, there will be a grace period for a good thirty days where warning, uh, education and all that's going to take place before we actually start the true enforcement. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, what's happening, and also give you a, an idea of the timeline. That's all I have.
Thank you. And also, with that being said, there is, we are, I'm not going to say creating, but reinforcing a parking authority board. And we are currently looking for members to, uh, be appointed to the parking authority board. And so if any of you would like to, um, be appointed or up for consideration, please apply. Um, I believe the applications are downstairs at the front desk, um, that is currently open now. And we're looking to appoint, um, some Chester residents over the next few council meetings. So if you would like to apply, uh, please, uh, fill out an application and bring, uh, your bio. Thank you.
I have a question, um, in concerns of the, with the parking authority. I want to know about residential parking. How is that going to affect residential parking? Because I know there was some problems, some issues before where people, um, lived, they had, uh, parking meters out in front of where they lived. Are we going to address that so that the residents know where they can park or what time?
Yes, we are. Uh, again, that's what I'm putting the timeline up. We're in the process of doing that right now, putting together the education literature to notify the residents. Also, I do plan to have them at probably the next council meeting, uh, to go over where we're at in the process and also have the a, actual education material ready at that point in time as well. We're also just back and forth right now with the previous parking company, uh, about these meter heads on there. That's some of the dilemma that we're dealing with right now from a legal standpoint. But we are hoping to have that resolved, uh, I would say, hopefully by the next council meeting.
Thank you. And the only thing that I ask as you go into whatever section of the city or wherever the, your project is going to start, is that you make sure that council, I know you communicate things to us, but we need to have detailed information because people see us out and about. And, you know, we're in church, we're at events, you know, we're everywhere. And so people are going to come to us and ask us. So, you know, make sure that we have all the information that we need so that we can answer questions from our constituency.
I will, I will.
Okay.
Here's just a sample. Uh, again, that's why I'm giving you the information now, so everyone has a heads up that it's coming. Uh, but counsel, you will have the timeline. This is the link right now. It's under construction, but at least you see there is a landing page that will talk about what's going on with the parking. Uh, we will also have hard copy material for the educational part of it. So it's starting now, and we're starting to make sure we pass out information as best we can, as often as we can and wherever we can. So you'll have everything that you need when you're out there.
Thank you. Um, at this point, it's, um, good and welfare time. Um, Officer Mc, or Justin, can I have the? Okay. Before we go into our comments from the public, um, we have a very, very special presentation, and Councilman Green, um, will lead us with that special presentation.
Um, so I say good morning again. And, um, today, there was, uh, I believe in giving people their flowers while they can still smell them, especially for people who's done good and continue to do good in this community. And so today, we were supposed to be honoring, uh, Ralph Dorsey with a proclamation, um, from the city, uh, from city council. Unfortunately, the mayor blocked that proclamation, and so there won't be a proclamation. Um, however, I did give with the rest of my council members, and we all thought that Ralph was deserving, uh, of a plaque or deserving of some kind of recognition for the hard work that he's done and the legacy that he's leaving for over twenty years in this community. And so council thought he was deserving of this award, and so we did prepare something for Ralph, and that is a plaque. And it's from the Council of the City of Chester does recognize Ralph Dorsey for twenty-plus years of service to the youth and the community of the City of Chester. for 20-plus years of service to the youth and the community of the City of Chester. And let me just, what a lot, what a lot of people don't know, Ralph has been dealing with the youth of the City of Chester. The Chester Biddy League, even after Ralph had his leg pinched, a lot of people didn't even know that he still was working. Like he still was.
Yes, yes.
And so, whether anyone else or whether the mayor thinks you're deserving of this award or not, council does. And so today, we honor you and we give you your flowers today while you can still smell them.
I wanna thank God for blessing me all these years for doing what I'm doing. You know, He's continuously blessing me and I know He's here for me, you know. Just as well as my family members who's here, you know, but I wouldn't have been able to do it without them because my sons, my sons is here. You know, y'all don't know, as long as I've been doing Biddy League and I had kids, you know, they've been going with me, doing whatever I needed, needed them to do. And when I had lost my leg, I couldn't really lift things up or carry anything. So I would get them up at seven years old or eight years old and say, carry myself out in the car, you know. And they did it all these years and they continuously do things for me that I can't really imagine anybody else doing, you know. So thanks to my sons and my daughters, who's, my daughter's not here right now, but they helped me out all the way through. And I got a special thanks for some of my other friends, Manny Wimbush, because, you know, through this whole journey that I've been traveling up and down the highway with these kids, he was there with me, you know, I have him, I say Manny, you hold the money so I won't mess it up. So Manny, he, you know, he's on point with the money, he don't get a dollar wrong or a dollar, dollar short. And I thank him for that, you know. And all, you know, I went to at least 13 different states through, through youth sports in Chester. And for the City of Chester, you know, I've, I've got players, you know, that, that, that's led in college, NCAA three-point all-time leader. I got players in college that went to college who's a top defenders in the nation. You know, I've got players who's made it to the NBA. But that don't say enough for me, you know, because because I've, I've also lost some players too, you know, and that really touches me, you know, when I, when we lose some of these kids to the streets, to jail, some of them even die violently. And, and, and that's my mission to carry on with this thing, what I'm doing, you know. I had a stroke, so I'm a little nervous right now, so I'm a little twisted in my words. But it, it hasn't always been like this for me, you know, growing up, the Wilpin Projects, you know, my grandfather used to walk around and collect cans so we can, so, so he could feed his kids. And he was collecting cans and I, and I sat there and watched him do that year after year, you know. After, he, he used to work for the city when he was younger. But once he retired, you know, he started, you know, you know, I guess his pension wasn't enough for him, so he collected cans and, you know, on a regular basis. And he'd come home with potatoes, sometimes milk, bread, stuff like that. They made sure that, you know, anybody in that house had something to eat. And, and he never gave up till his last dying day, he, he never gave up. He was collecting cans at 80 years old, you know, walking down the street, you know, with, with his cart, collecting cans. And that, and that, and I look at those days and they, and they made me feel like, you know, wanting to do something for my people. And that, and that's another reason why I did it. And I got some other people here like Marray Walker, you know, I was, I started out as a barber. You know, I was working at the new shop, I was making a lot of money in there, meeting a lot of people, you know, but we talked a whole bunch of trash and then we got a lot of knowledge out of talking that trash because we talked about sports and we talked about life. And she came and got me and said, Ralph, I want you to help work this summer league with me, with, with Mr. I Jones. So I went down there and started working this program with Mr. I Jones. And, and it lasted for about four or five years, you know, we didn't have any trouble down there, you know. He was on top of everybody like a soldier, you know. All I had to do was follow his lead, you know, he said, Ralph, you gonna be doing this one day. So I want you to keep your head up and listen to me, boy. He say, listen to me, boy. And, 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 and I would listen to him and, and, and that helped me carry on. Then I look at Ms. Rosetta Carter, you know, I've been working with the city for over 20-some years. And I can tell you, you know, before the pandemic started, I was working for Ms. Carter for about five years and we was creating programs, meeting all the time and some of the workers said, why we gotta keep meeting? Why we gotta keep meeting? But she was sharing the knowledge that she had gained with us, you know. And I followed Ms. Carter lead and, and then she had me doing some things that I never thought I'd be doing. Going into school, talking to kids about life skills, going to the senior citizen buildings, talking to them, you know, picking them up on the van, taking them to different programs, sharing some of the information that are on health, health issues and things like that. And, and I'm glad that I got the chance to be, be, to be born in Chester and never left this city and be in here forever. And, and then I also want to thank, you know, Ms. Marray Walker again because, you know, we build a team with these guys you see standing back there. It's a different team that we have now with, with Headline Sports Agency. And these guys are a part of it, they're doing all the legwork, all, all, all the marketing and everything. So, you know, with, with Headline Sports, we gonna be starting a sports agency here and with, not only in Chester, but the surrounding areas. And we got some kids here that, that got the knowledge and don't want nothing from this but to get knowledge and to come back to different communities like this and, and share their wealth. And, and even though I'm not the president at Biddy anymore, you'll see me there and you'll see some of these students right along with me coming down there asking, how can they volunteer and do the things that they, they need to do? And we're, we're, we're not gonna stop there, but we're gonna go out and we're gonna recruit some of these kids for these programs that they have going on. You know, we got marketing, we got advertising, we got all types of things that these guys specialize in at Marviron Prep. And they actually won a state basketball tournament. So they not only just, they not only just good students, they're athletes too. So, so, you know, I just want to thank my family for coming out and everybody here for my support, you know. And, you know, I, I'm not done yet, you know, I'm in, I'm mid-age now and I got another 50 more years to do what I gotta do. And, and, and I wanna say, you know, and another one of my partners over there is Eric Jones, you know, he's on our team too with my, with, with, with the program that we got. And we meet, we meet at least once every, at least once every couple of weeks and we talk about what we want to do. And right now, we have, we, you know, the students might have things that they want to do. But, you know, by us being the head of this program, you know, they'll give us information and we'll decide where we, where areas we need them to work in. And, and I'm ready to go, you know, I, I ain't stopping here, I'm ready to go. And we gonna make, you gonna, we gonna make the city proud, we gonna make the community proud, and we gonna make the state of Pennsylvania proud of our program. Thanks again, council people for the work, I really appreciate it. I know some of you personally, oh, and I see my brother over there too. You know, he's done a lot for me too behind the scenes now. He say, I'm not doing it anymore, I'm, I'm, I'm done, I'm done, I'm retired. But I call him up, I say, I need a referee. He say, he say, I ain't coming, then he called me back within 36, say, I'm on my way. I'm on my way. And I see my nephew over there, you know, so, so. I see a lot of supporters here that, that's here for me. And I want to thank them for taking time out their busy day, for coming out. Thanks again, everyone, for showing up.
Ralph, please, well, you can sit down, I'm sorry if you, if you can't stand. But I just wanted to, to tell you, Ralph has been a part of our, our son. See, he has been one of our son's mentors and heroes since, I think my, you encountered my son at, at like the age of four. He'll be 30 this year. And he, we don't let our, we just have never been the kind of parents to let our kids just run around and go anywhere freely. So you gotta have a big trust factor to be able to be around our kids. And he's had my son for a week and I'd never go anywhere without my kids or if they're doing something, we're always with them. But Ralph has always been somebody that we trusted and you're still one of his heroes. He actually came home yesterday and he asked me how he can find you. I said, his number has not changed, he still has the same number. So he's coming to see you, but I just wanted to tell you thank you for being a, a big part of his life, for Biddy, for hollering at him if you ever see him doing stuff he's not supposed to do and for being selfless. You know, we really appreciate everything that you did and that you continue to do.
Thank you. And let, let me, let me just say, I want to publicly thank the rest of my council members for supporting me on this recognition and continuing to support me in whatever I do. So council, thank you. And I don't know if you guys have anything you'd like to say to Ralph.
I am so super proud of you for enduring all that you have had to endure. You have changed so many lives and the children are better for it. Thank you.
We appreciate all of your services to the community and our kids have really benefited from what you have imparted upon them. So thank you.
Coach, I want to say thank you as well. I don't know if you remember, but you were my very first, first Biddy coach. My dad brought me down there. I was actually playing with the older kids, Shep and your son. And I ran the other opposite way with the basketball and they're like, yo, what's going on? But it was my first time ever playing basketball and you worked with me and I'll never forget that. So you've been a mentor to me, idol, and I just want to say thank you for all that you do.
We're gonna get into the comments section, but I'd like us to take a moment of silence for Ms. Mary Smith. She's being funeralized today and she was certainly an icon in this community. She was one of the first, I believe, to provide scholarships for our children going on to college. So let's take a moment and have a moment of silence for Mary Smith, Miss Mary Smith. Amen. Okay, first, for comments, we're gonna have Mr. Jamil Cotman. State your name and your address and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Um, I would like to first thank City Council, from the landlords' part of you. We had a great meeting. Thank you for, Councilman Green, from kind of, from setting that up. Thank you, Mr. Leitner, for having a great meeting. We, anyone knows that we've been on the city behind about this landlords. As landlords, all the fees and everything else, we had a great meeting of the day. Anyone that wants to know about the next meeting, it will be May the 23rd here at City Council, mean, here at the City Hall. Please, 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 as landlords, come out, give the information so we can, so y'all can know what's going on with the city, where our fees is going at and everything else. But like I said, it was a great meeting. I know I'm always here bashing things, but I'm here today on making things happen. I will.
And what time is that meeting?
I believe it's at, probably it's at 2 o'clock, I believe it's at 2 o'clock again. Also, I would like to thank the Parks Department, new coordinator, Shaquan. They came out yesterday down some village, we're doing another, um, big cleanup with Whitener this Saturday. If anybody's free, come on down there. They helped, me just calling them, they came down some village, helped clean that area up real fast for us to get us ready for this weekend. And I'm so happy that we have a, that we're getting a partnership with the city now that we can make things happen. And we will be doing it throughout the whole city all summer, well, all year long, talking to Whitener. They want to do it throughout the whole city, but we're concentrating right now of some village, even trying to get the baseball field back up and running down there. And we're gonna try, we're sitting down with different organizations to bring flag football down to some village park. Hopefully this summer, we should have a place. So like again, thank, thank y'all, thank y'all and thank y'all from helping us make the difference in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. John Shelton. Mr. John Shelton.
Good morning, noon, wherever it is, with old folks, it's all the time. To the mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. It's an adjustment period. And you seem to be adjusting very well. If you don't work in it, you got to work on it. And you all seem to be doing that. Nothing's easy. We've been here before. Sounds like we appreciate what we're hearing. As a taxpayer, we're not hearing that much, the plans, what's happening, who's doing it, why? As a citizen, we don't know it. Has to be more communication. If you remember my statement, communication is the only thing that's gonna make this thing work. After communicate, you gotta make something happen. So we're looking forward to something happening, but we like to know what it is. And we like to be a part of the decisions that are made for where we live, where we lived all our lives. And help it to get to where it is. Work at it, or work with us to work at it. That's gotta be connected yet. Now, these things are brand new to me and I've been here a long time, I mean, a real long time. I'm thankful. But don't exclude us because we are old. We have to communicate to make it work. I thank you for what you've done. Not necessarily, I agree with the direction, but I thank you for what you've done in the direction. Keep that up, don't lose that, because we're still here. And until my time come, I'll be here. And I'll help as much as I can. And until my time come, I'll be here, and I'll help as much as I can. Don't fight, don't do the like, but keep everything in sight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Miss, Mrs. Dolores Shelton.
Two old folks again. But God is good.
Yes, he is.
Now, I noticed the time goes up, so I have made my notes. I'm gonna start to bottom and go up to make sure I get important stuff. First of all, I want to say to Mr. Dorsey, I honor you, I just praise you for what you're doing with children, because that's who's gonna be signing ass security checks, and that's why they need to be trained. We won't be here forever, but you have put interest in those youngsters and to bring them up. And I want you to know that Dorsey's, I have Dorsey cousins, so it just might be related, who knows? Okay, another thing I want to say to you. You talked about your grandfather picking up cans. Well, I tell you, when we were children, we picked up cans to go to the movies. I think what we'd get, two cent or nickel, pennies, whatever we got, we put it together on Saturday morning, and that's how we got to the movies. So there's no shame by picking up some cans, 'cause many movie I saw by picking up cans and bottles. I think those came in real bottles there. And so that's how we did. So son, keep on, and God will continue to bless you, because you are blessing others. Now, I just don't understand how anybody can stop anybody from getting an honor or getting an award. I don't understand that. And we, we need to award people in our community, especially the young people, 'cause this, this young man is like a child to me, but we have to continue to do that. So don't be so proud and haughty that you can't say thank you to somebody else. And I believe, give your flowers while you live, 'cause when you're laying down there, you can't hear a thing. So congratulations, Fred, and the community, and the council for doing that, and continue, because when you do right, nobody can stop you.
That's right.
All right, another thing, see, all my stuff now is by this young man. He mentioned a very important word. We need volunteers. And you know, our folks, we don't like to volunteer. It's always, how much am I gonna get? What does it pay? It's not about pay. Volunteers is how you move forward, because I now understand, oh, my three minutes is up? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But anyway, oh, Channel Five. I have enjoyed, since I wasn't feeling well, to watch the council meeting. Now, I don't like the Cowboys and Indians and the war. I don't know why you have movies on that channel, but put some of these committees on that channel. Thank you very much. Young man, keep on, keep on.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Next, we'll have Mrs. Susan Dennis.
Good morning, council and residents. Two eighteen Arbor. What I wanted to do, first of all, is give accolades to Ralph. I don't think any of us could say enough to you for all that you have done for the children in Chester. The award today was definitely much deserved. I also want to talk about the streets. I'm so glad to see that they came in, that the Department of Transportation came in and took care of our major state roads. But now, what are we gonna do about the regular streets in Chester? Do we have some kind of grants we can write for, or something of that nature, so that we can work on those other streets, 'cause they are in bad shape? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson? Mr. Nelson?
I don't think I ever wrote nothing down in all the years I've been coming here. Since the last council meeting, I was publicly shamed and privately apologized to. I've been getting numerous phone calls from family and friends asking me what was me and Mr. Kotman arguing about. For the record, me and Mr. Kotman was nowhere near each other. I was in the front, I had moved myself, because it was a crowded meeting, and the mayor said that, you know, people could stand, but I know it's a fire hazard to stand in front of the door. He challenged, said something about sitting. I don't need titles, I'm over half century old. I have, have, just like anyone else, have many titles, directed this, Mr. this, so-and-so. It doesn't matter. The most important title to me is Father and Papa and Mr. Nelson. And that might not mean nothing to no one else, but to me and mine, that's important. And I would hope that this council is the only one, the mayor and his council is the only one that can fix what was publicly wrong and privately apologize to me. It might be mine to you, but it kept me up at night, because I was put in a position, the commissioner was behind me. People that know me, over the ninety, ninety percent of the times you see me, I'm standing because of service connector injury. I don't say that often. I don't, that's, but when he was screaming, I had a cop behind me, and I had to make a decision to sit in pain or go to jail. No one should be put in that position because of eagles. I've been in leadership a long time, and I, I'm always humble to the people that work for me. I just don't understand, and I hope that council and the mayor can mention what was said privately, the privately apology I got, and publicly, because I have children. And that Nelson name means something to me and mine. And no one has the right, I don't have the right to shame no one's name in here, and no one has the right to shame mine, whether you like me, dislike me, you will respect me, and that's all I ask. Thank you. And Ralph, I want to thank you for, if it wasn't for you, my daughter wouldn't be playing. My daughter wouldn't be a Hall of Famer, 'cause I said she couldn't ball, and you said she could. So thank you.
Mr. Nelson, you said that only the mayor and council can fix this. The mayor has to fix it. The mayor humiliated you, not council. And so that is something that the mayor needs to do. I can't speak for the mayor, you know, so that is something that, if he's a real man, he'll do that at the next meeting. He'll apologize publicly.
When, when he humiliated me, I hear all the oohs and ahs, and me and the mayor have, he's apologized to me privately in front of you guys. That's why I said, "The council, you heard him apologize to me privately." I wanted a public apology, just so that's why I said, "Council," because he wasn't here. You guys heard him apologize to the public. No, you guys did not, did, did not do that to me. But we can't be picking sides when you wanna grovel at, because he said some things that you didn't agree with, with the mayor. I didn't hear nobody grovel when he screamed the Nelson name like that. So I want everybody to just start being fair, 'cause I normally come to this podium and say, "Everybody smile," because there's always tension in the room, old, young, and in between. But please, stop picking and choosing, and let's, let's stop clicking up. Right is right, wrong is wrong. A young man, councilman did not say nothing wrong. He spoke the truth, and that's all we supposed to do here, on this side and that side. Stop picking sides, and just like we all should, bleed orange and black, whether you old, young, or whoever. And if anybody need my help, you know Mr. Nelson is the first one there, and I don't come out and tell everybody I help, 'cause it'd be a long list of people sitting in this room and outside that I could say, but I would never say. I'd take it to my grave. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, I'd like to say something to you. I agree that no man should be, or woman should be disrespected or humiliated. And when you're looking for an apology, I wasn't here to hear his apology, but I apologize that you had to go through that and that your family was shamed. I thank you for everything that you do for our community, it's commendable. So thank you for your service, and thank you for your bravery for even standing up for what had happened to you. So I apologize that you had to go through that, okay?
Thank you. And the mayor's not a bad person. I don't have nothing personal against the mayor. I want everybody to know that. I don't have nothing personal against the mayor. He's, me and him just never, we don't see eye to eye. We argue issues, but something happened, people happened, we all entitled to a bad day, everybody. So don't take it personal. It was a bad day. I don't take it personal. I argue issues. I don't argue emotions. Thank you, council, and I don't want to hold up no more, nobody's time. Thank the city and the council for hearing me. That's all I ask.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nelson, I'm not gonna hold up the meeting any longer than I have to. I was there for when everything happened. I was there to hear the private apology. As a councilperson, I want to apologize to you, because you are a constituent, you're a member of this community, you're a member I respect, and you're a member that I serve. So I just want to apologize to you. I come from a military family where you look a man in his eye, you say what you have to say, and go about your business. I'm a hundred percent with you. You don't have to like me, but you will respect me. Plain and simple. You know what I mean? I respect everyone, and I demand the same respect in return. And if we can't respect each other, then there's other ways that we can handle that situation. But I always believe in respecting everybody and respecting the space that you're in. So I apologize to you if you felt disrespected within city hall, within this community, because as a community, we should never disrespect anybody. So I just wanted to say that to you. So thank you.
I want to correct you too, young man. I always told you, the best way to win the fight is to make your enemy your friend. Ain't no other way to do that, all right? I don't want to hear that no more.
I'll think about it.
Ms. Regina Mentor.
Good morning.
My name is Regina Mentor. I reside at seven ten Ward Street. First, I would like to say, Rauf, I have coached for the Cheetahs, the Upland Hurricanes, the Cougars, but my first coaching job was with Chester Biddy, thanks to Rauf and Ms. Raylene. So Rauf, your flowers, thank you very much. So I have a question in reference to the pool. I'm not sure if you guys know anything as far as the opening and anything, but my son had been an employee at the pool since he was sixteen years old. He's actually twenty now, and we would like to know if the employees who were at the pool who had nothing to do with whatever was going on, are they still gonna be employed? Because this is his livelihood, all the kids at the pool know him. He's basically the veteran lifeguard, other than Turtle. And we're just wondering, well, you know, those lifeguards who were working every day, my son worked every day overtime with five lifeguards at the pool the whole summer, he's, I just want to know if he gonna have his job? Because he was one who, and a couple others, always at work. Always at work. Always at work. Always, just want to say that. Also, the free lunches that's given out in the summer at the parks down some village, I, I just talk, I, I've lived, I've lived in some village since I was five years old. I moved down there December nineteen eighty-eight, and my mom recently moved, like, twenty seventeen to Ward Street. The, the free lunches have always been in the park, whether it was a bathroom or not, because we all know the bathrooms are not available unless it's voting time. So I went to go talk to Pebbles maybe about a month ago, and I let her know, "I'm gonna come, and I'm gonna volunteer to do activities with the kids down the park," 'cause all they do is eat the lunch, and they just sit there. So I said, "Me and my son are gonna come down there if he don't have his job at the pool, and we're going to volunteer, do activities and such and such with the kids." Now, I ran into her maybe two days ago, and she said, "I'm not sure who it was, but now the lunches have to be served at True Vine, because there's no bathrooms at the park." Well, there been ain't no bathrooms at the park. So why should these children who have been coming to this park for years have to now walk all the way to True Vine? Some of the parents, whether, nobody believes them or not, we actually care about our children, and some of the parents are just unable to get on a bus, walk their kids to school, or whatever. Some kids, some parents might come to the corner of Curry, and they can see Pebbles, so they're like, "Okay, Pebbles there, I'm gonna just watch them walk to the park." So now they gotta go all the way to True Vine, like, how they gonna get there? I don't think it's fair, because there's no bathrooms. There been no bathrooms. What's the saying? If it's not broke, don't fix it. Okay, what if it is broken? Nobody still fixes it. Now we gotta, you know what I mean? So that's a concern, because all of the children won't get to True Vine to get those free lunches. So then what? The people that, at True Vine, they're gonna get the lunches, adults, people that come there. That's not fair, because those kids down some village, they need their free lunches. So that's just a concern that I have, and hopefully the park, the lunches can stay at the park. If not, I'm gonna come back and keep fighting for it to be at the park, and we figure out some type of way these kids can use the bathroom. I mean, they've been not using it for years. I don't know why in twenty twenty-four it would be a problem. That's it.
Let me, I don't, so earlier today, we did approve for the applications to be posted for the summer, summer food program and the Memorial Park pool. And so I would encourage your son to apply. I'm not sure when, Chief Lightner, you may know when that application will be going on. Also, our new Parks and Recreation manager is here, so I'm assuming him and the chief will take that into consideration, which you just said, as they plan.
Who's the?
To Dr. J.
He's the Parks Coordinator.
Who's the Parks Coordinator? Please.
The Recreation Coordinator.
Okay.
Okay.
See, we don't know.
So, Councilman. Can I just say, normally, I don't know what is the true protocols of the employees at the pool, but normally, the former employees, the former lifeguards, they come, they do their lifeguard research, and they're hired. Now, I'm not gonna say too much, because there's so much that's going on with the pool situation, but I will go to bat for my son to get his job back. I would put wherever I got put on blast, I will do that, because my son is that lifeguard. If y'all was to go down to the pool, the parents know my son, the children know my son, the man who do the hot dogs and all, they know my son, and he deserves his job. I don't care what Lee did, my son should have his job along with a lot, several others. So I will be coming back, so I can see what's going on with the pool, or whoever I need to talk to back there. I'm back, just to let you know.
And so ju- just for clarity, we will have a pool management company, correct, Chief? So there, so we're outsourcing the management of the pool this year?
Okay.
And so there will be a management company, a professional company, that deals with managing pools. And so your son will be able to apply to that company. Am I correct? Because the goal is to hire Chester residents, so.
That's correct, Councilman.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a wonderful, amazing day.
And I would just say, I would just say, just, what's her name?
Regina.
Regina.
Regina. Ms. Regina.
Yes, yes, yes.
Here. Just, can you talk to us afterwards?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And last, I have, is this Randall?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First and foremost, I'm fighting stage two Parkinson's, okay? And I'm, where I live at, they're doing the illegal dumping.
First and foremost, I'm fighting stage two Parkinson's. Okay? And I'm, where I live at, they're doing the illegal dumping in my backyard. Oh, illegal dumping in the backyard. Last week it was two box springs and mattresses and they just told me to bag them up. How do you bag up mattresses? I, I mean, they have fleas and everything in there, bed bugs, so I can't bother it. So my brother, I paid him to take them and wherever he put them at, he took them to Philadelphia. And that's one. Now, there's, uh, what is it? Satellite dish, three TVs out there right now, a boob TV out there. And I live right by, behind, um, St. Paul's Church. Now people come through there to get to the charter school. This morning, I'm thinking it was a cat. Because we know Parkinson's is nor- neurologic disease that I'm facing. It was a rat. I got COPD, the lady was just mentioning about asthma and everything. I have COPD, bronchitis and asthma. Thank God that lawsuit just came to an end. For my CPAP. The Parkinson's I caught through pesticide. And we know there's no survive of Parkinson's. So I have nothing to lose. And Ms. Tamika, I reached out to her about the situation and she helps me. That's why I'm here today. And the good brother over here, Ralph, we grew up, I, well, I can't say we grew up, I'm a few years older than you, but I, but he's my little brother. And I, I'm so glad he received what he, what he rightly deserved. But I called here before about that and they came, but at the time they came, I already told the lady from here, the mattresses and everything are, are gone. So I went in my pocket and I paid because it has to go away. Cause it's sitting out there. And the more I turn around and this morning put my trash out and I seen, it was like, um, Walmart out there, an electronic department, two TVs over here and a satellite dish. On this side, it's two TVs and the reading off, off to the side, there's a big boob TV. And the people, the ladies have to get through there. When they get food out every Wednesday and Monday, how do you go through the alley when there's rats jumping out there? So what I do, I try to, I went to Home Depot and I got the pellets. Once they eat them, they'll die. But guess what? I mean, you do what you have to do. I need a sign for illegal dumping in that back area there. I can't keep going out there to do it because I do, I hear my little things as I walk. I go up and down the alley picking up things. The village, my time is up. My time will be up with just Parkinson's, but I ain't going out without a fight. I'm not going out without a fight. Does somebody please do something about that?
Um, who can see Mr. Robinson after? Mr. Drawn here, raise your hand. He will see you after the meeting, okay?
Thank you very, very much.
Sorry about that. Is there anyone else? This is the end of it, but if someone came in late, Mrs. Nelson? And give your, your name and?
Yes.
Name and address.
Shannon Nelson. I reside at 1119 Potter Street. Uh, good morning, City Councilman and Chester resident. Um, I just want to say, I've been providing entertainment for the city probably close to about 27 years, having big parties, cabaret, things of that nature. Now that I have my own entertainment business, um, I've worked very hard to get where I'm at today. I'm not known just in Chester, my entertainment business is worldwide. I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate it when people try to sabotage an event. Um, for instance, I have a friend here in the city who has events called Chester Day Festival for the kids. Someone from this office reached out to him and told him he had to change, and he's a friend of mine GL, told him he had to change the name of his event because the mayor and I were having an event called the same, you know, with the same name. Like that just caused chaos. That's like sabotaging because it goes out on social media, people start sharing, it goes from, oh, we're stealing the name to we're trying to blackball them and then it turns into a political chaos. Now this is two weeks before an event. So it took my husband and I, Nelson, almost a week to try to put this fire out. You know, this, this event is costing a lot of money, a lot of time. I should be in Atlanta filming right now, but I'm here sacrificing, you know, to have a fundraiser for Chester High Basketball Team. So in addition to that, um, I, I mean, I just don't like it. You know, we put in, I put in too much hard work for this event. Secondly, we're having a fundraiser for Chester High Basketball Team to raise money for the uniform, to get the kids the new uniforms. Um, I figured, you know, I kick it up a notch, have it at Harris Casino, bring entertainment back into the city because I'm the only licensed insurance promoter that they ever let have events and concerts here. So I take two months off from my acting, um, get some entertainers here, have the event called Chester Day, have everybody in orange and black. Me and, um, and Cortons with Harris are giving away prizes. You know, it's going to be a fun-filled day. I had the Young Guns to come down, not to do hard rap, but do, you know, just some, just have entertainment, a fun day. And then we have some of the Chester residents that did nothing but try to sabotage it. And I think that's horrible. In addition to that, um, we've had, um, we haven't gotten any response from like the district or from, from the alumni. Like I just thought that we would have an overwhelming response from the city. You know, the people that bought tickets first? Philadelphia and my media family. Not saying we don't have ticket sales, I'm not saying that. I just felt as though we should have more support from our city. So what I did in the last past 48 hours, instead of just having Young Guns come to perform, I added Ashley Rice. I've, yes, for the residents. You know, I figured I was going to do this at my next event. I said, but let me do something for them now. Okay? So I had added Ashley Rice, I added Yan Wick, who also specializes in contemporary R&B in Seoul. I have a spoken word artist coming out to this event and I also have a media to coverage and I threw in another DJ. So I have five entertainers, I have two DJs, I have the media coming out for $50 to raise money for these kids. I can't do anything else. You know, I haven't gotten any sleep all week long. I'm, I'm doing this for my city. Everything that I've ever done is for the city. And I just don't like seeing the negative comments or, you know, every, it's like everybody wants to complain, but nobody wants to help.
Thank you. Thank, thanks for listening to us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I had to, I had to just get that out there. But yeah, it's for the kids. You know, even if they don't like me or the mayor, do it for these kids.
And you said someone from this office?
Yes.
Called to tell them?
Yes, they did.
What office is that?
They were, they called from this office. Okay, my husband wants me to be quiet, but that's what happened.
I don't want to put that person on blast, but I will gladly share that information with council, uh, if, if needed.
Yeah, because.
My wife is highly emotional.
Yeah, so he has to pull me back.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So hopefully we'll see all you guys there.
I got my ticket already.
You have, you were one of the first and while you're ticketing.
So I'll be there.
It's going to be spectacular.
Thank you. Fifty dollars.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I think Mr. Saleem wants to speak.
Who?
Uh, these, these ladies would like to speak.
I think Mr. Saleem wants to speak.
They're going to sign up. Okay. Okay, come. Is, is it all of you or just one? Just you?
Just me.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I just want to reindicate on the two ladies that were up here. One is about?
I know your name. The bathroom. I know your name, but everybody else. Everybody, I know you, but everybody else doesn't, so for the record.
I'm Margaret Brown, I'm at 216 Ward Street. Um, I want to know if, when you look into the bathrooms at the pool, you could also, it should go along with the bathroom at the park? Because that's been working on and off for years. Even when I was young, going to the park and everything, we used to have to go home to go to the bathroom, where sometimes if I had a relative that lived on, um, Jeffrey Street, we would run over there. So if it's a way they can look into that bathroom also. Um, the second one is, um, on Ward Street. And I've been complaining, and you probably heard this in the past, about that dirt pile. Well, Friday, I went outside the house and I looked across the street and there was a truck going into the yard dumping dirt again. Now, this was supposed to have been taken care of, but it hasn't. I literally sat out there and watched five dump trucks dump dirt. That dirt pile must be as high as this ceiling now and all that dirt is constantly blowing. I have paid, I, I took pictures. It was so upsetting because I'm constantly complaining about that dirt and not being able to breathe and your houses and cars are dirt on them every single day. Um, the company is the JMC and wherever they're doing work, it's not, it's, has to be in this area for the same driver within a half hour keeps coming back with other drivers dumping that dirt over there. Uh, we don't know if it's contaminated or what, but it is very high. It's a, I think an eight or 12 foot fence around that property, but it gets higher and higher, okay? So I, I would very much like to have a border around that, inside of that fence or something. I was told before they're supposed to be watering down, but you know, they're not watering except for when it comes from heaven. You know, we get the rainwater on it, but it blows every single day, okay?
I know what you're talking about.
You do.
Um, um, Chief Lightner, that's an LNI issue. They're dumping up on the property. So wouldn't that enforcement come from LNI?
We'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. So Ms. Brown, can you see the chief after?
I will. Thank you very much.
How y'all doing, council? Thanks for having me. How y'all doing, everybody? Oof. I just want to publicly.
Say your name and address.
Shepherd Garner, 2508 West Third Street. I want to publicly say thank you to Rauf. Uh, Rauf has been essential for the community, especially for me. Um, I was blessed to have a great career, go on to play college basketball, play professional basketball, um, straight out of Chester. And a lot of that wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for Ralph Dorsey invested in us as children. Um, we often talk about our childhood days, our Chester Biddy days, which is a staple in Chester, Pennsylvania and all over the county. So publicly, I want to say thank you, Oof, for your service and what you've done for all of us, my age, we talk about you often. So I just want to say thank you and I love you, man. We appreciate you for everything you've done over the years.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I'd like to make a very quick comment.
Would you say your name and, and address?
Yes, ma'am. Shukra. I, uh, my name is Amin Abdou, this is Saleem. I had a concern for this city for a long time and not only me, but certainly some of you. And we want to make sure that the concern are the right concerns, the right concerns. God said, they said, uh, after he tore this well down, there's tsunamis and the mudslides and the rain and so on, so on. He tore it well down because God did not approve this well. So God said, they said that we going to build again. And God said, well, yeah, and we will tear it down again. So we would, we do not, certainly do not want to rebuild this that God is going to tear it down again. It going, it cannot be built again. So this is the idea here that we stay on the right track. It says that for them to try to rebuild this again would be like, it'd be, you will have gray-headed babies, gray-headed babies going to be that hard, that hard. So I do not want us to get into that, trying to rebuild this. We want to be on the path of building right with the knowledge and that God said he would, we will have, it would be a new heaven, a new earth and a new mind. So we not trying to build with this old mind and, and having it so hard. This is what we want to come to and this is what I've been working all these years for, to that we arrive at this point here. And we want, certainly want to know which way to go. We want to know which way to go. So that's Abraham, if I may, real quickly, Abraham. It's, this is the day of religion. And religion means, uh, realign, to realign yourself back to your Lord. And I think that many of us do not understand that or do not have that intention. We want to rebuild as was. So we want to realign ourselves, we want to be, we, we realign, realign, we, we, we realign. One nation under God. And the point that we want, want to express here, sir, uh, Deputy Mayor, that, uh, I, realign, we realign. I, uh, there's quite a bit to be said in this way. Inshallah, God will not pray that we can continue moving in the right direction and not be turned back. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saleem.
Thank you.
This will be our last comment and then we'll have, um, allow the council to make their comments.
Thank you and good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sherling Laws. My address is 103 West Alcanton Avenue, Chester. And I wanted to speak on the pool. Uh, I worked there for the first time last year and I can certainly back up the young lady as far as her son being there every day as I, I was and the other two women with me at the front. Uh, they worked diligently, they were very passionate, they were very efficient and taught me well to be efficient at that, uh, position as well. And I would like to think that we would be considered, uh, for employment again, not myself so much as the other two women, because they have been there for years and have relied on that every summer and have done very well. Well-known, well-recognized. And I just would hope that those people who did well, had nothing to do with anything illegal that went on, would be considered rather than just having to apply and be lumped in with anybody who has not been there in the past and has not contributed to the upkeep and the, uh, pattern of, um, good service at the pool. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, um, Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes, I wanted to, um, take a moment to tell Sean and Mark and the rest of the street team, I see you guys putting in the work and I, you deserve a round of applause because you go out there. And, and I know I'm probably bothering y'all with everything, but the, the people, our residents come to council members and when we respond and we call you guys, you come and you get it done. And the, the community is looking so much better because of the efforts of the street department. So keep on doing what you're doing. I see you and so does everybody else. Keep up the good work.
Um, thank you and to go off of Councilwoman Gibson, you, I, I do see you guys out there and the, and the work is being done. Thank you. Uh, myself and Councilwoman, uh, Wes, um, we came out to the scene when they had a water break down here downtown and you guys was out there, um, all night and all day. And so we thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. And also, uh, to Jamil Kotman and the Sum Village crew, thank you guys. Uh, myself and Councilwoman Gibson, we did go to the cleanup, um, two weeks ago and I commend you for all the work that you continue to do. Um, and you don't let anything or no one stop you. And so thank you, thank you, thank you. And continue to keep Sum Village alive and continue to clean up Sum Village and make it the best place. Um, so thank you for that. And also, uh, there's going to be a block party today downtown Delco Gives, um, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It will be down on Avenue of the State. So the streets will be blocked off, um, just an FYI. And if you guys get a chance, come on down, be a lot of entertainment and, uh, vendors and we can support our downtown business owners. And streets, someone, um, Ms. Dennis, you spoke about the streets, um, that Penn Dot, uh, did, and they did do an amazing job. And, uh, I did, uh, early when I first took office, uh, one of the things I asked about was improving our streets, especially, uh, Well Street. Uh, it, that, that street right there by the train, it's so bumpy and so crazy. And one of the things that the chief did say is that, that it's, it's in the works, and I believe, um, some of the ARPA money will be helping towards our street improvements. So, um, you know, as you all know, Rome wasn't built overnight, so a lot of these things will take time. It took us years to get to where we are, and it's gonna take us years to get out, and also a lot of money that we gotta find. Um, and so I know the chief is working on that, and, uh, there will be some streets improvements forthcoming. And, uh, in reference to the pool, um, I'm not sure what that is. Um, but again, uh, th- there will be a pool management company, and, and it is my hope that, uh, even though we are outsourcing the management, that we still will post the application online for our Chester residents to apply. Um, and it's my hope that majority of the, the, the people hired will come from Chester. And so I would encourage you to apply again, and anyone else who's worked there, um, in the past, um, to apply again as well. And, uh, that is it for me.
Councilman Davis?
Um, yes, I just wanna reiterate, uh, shout out to the streets department as well. I reached, I reached out to you all in regards to some residents. Like Mr. Shelton said, you know, don't forget about our wiser and, um, older citizens in our community. And a, a few of them have approached me about Avenue of the States, which is the Penn Dot Road, about getting their handicap parking, uh, lines paved back in the street. You all assured me that if Penn Dot didn't get to it, you would happy to, I guess, basically do their job for them and take care of our residents. So I appreciate all the hard work that you all have been doing. Um, Mr. Cotman, thank you for all the work that you're doing down Sun Village. Um, that's, that's my home, that's my community, that's my people, so I greatly appreciate that. I want to continue, excuse me, to reiterate the importance of the boards and committees that we have open for the city of Chester. We encourage the residents to apply. Um, that goes directly to the HR and appointments committee, so that way we can actually get some, uh, you know, residents who want to be a part of city government, who want to have a voice to, uh, you know, have the opportunity to do so. So I encourage all to continue to apply on the city's website for the different boards and committees that we have available. Um, it's important, um, for, you know, for you to have a voice in your community, as well as people be able to come up to you and say, hey, can you teach me this information? And it's, and, you know, people from the community can actually, you know, do that. Instead of always coming to city council members or the mayor, you know, you can have a own voice and a control of what's going on in the community, and I think that's important. Um, so I just wanna continue to reiterate that. And, you know, thank you for the hard work that Chief Lightner and everyone in City Hall is doing, the HR department, the council finance department, LNI, um, the fire department, zoning, everyone. I, I wanna commend you all for the hard work that you do every day that might go unnoticed. So I just wanna give everybody, everyone, their flowers while they're here, so thank you.
Okay, and, um, I too, well, you know, the streets department, they're my department. I don't care. You're, I'mma always be a part of you, and I appreciate all of your hard work, what you do on a daily basis. I know what you do, and it's not easy. And, you know, all departments call on the street, the streets department. Uh, LNI has a hard job too, and, uh, I wanna thank you for all of your hard work. Um, Reverend Dr. Georgia Anderson, I appreciate your coming out and blessing us today with that wonderful prayer and for your support of the community, because you, you do community outreach. When we have our grieving bereaved families, they can always, and if they need a larger place to have their services in, you, your door is always open, so. And Teresa Scott Good, I wanna thank you too, because you're, you're not saying anything, but this lady here, she goes to bat for her community and, uh, where she lives. And I wanna thank you for your community engagement, and, uh.
I would say something.
I, no, but I wanna thank you publicly, because we've been working together for years, fussing at each other and all that. But the love is still there, and you are a vital part of our community, and I wanna thank you. Mr. Cotman, um, I love the way that you advocate for, um, Sun Village, you know? Sometimes people have a tendency to forget about Sun Village, and they do. I've watched it, you know? I know when Councilwoman Williams was here, she was always having events and things down in the park because she wanted them to feel in, an inclusion, you know, in what we do in the city. I wanna thank the people who are sitting here praying for us every council meeting. Um, I want you to know how much these ladies here, raise your hand, they, they come in here and they, they sit and pray for us. Every council meeting. And I want you to know, I really appreciate that, you know, because prayer is the key to helping us do what we need to do as a community, as, as a servant of God. And, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Shelton, you always talking about how old you are, but you're a vital part of our community, and you're still out there in the trenches, and I thank God for you. I really do. So I thank everyone for coming out today. I thought it was a good meeting, and, uh, um, uh, Devin Prep, they're gone, those young men are gone. But I've wanted them to come today and just be acknowledged for the work that they're doing in our community. And when they come down to visit council, and, uh, um, they also make sure that they are, uh, patronizing some of our businesses. And their favorite place to eat is the Red Brick Cafe, so they're probably down there having lunch, you know? But. But thanks to everyone, uh, finance, all the departments, you know, um, our city clerk, Ms. Neal. You know, I appreciate everybody for what you're doing. And have a good afternoon. If there's nothing else to be said, this meeting is adjourned.